Welcome to the Monday, June 19th Board of Alderman Meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to draw attention to the significance of today's date, June 19th, which is now a national holiday and state holiday known as Juneteenth. Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States. It was on June 19th, 1865, that Union soldiers landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free, nearly two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation. Since then, Juneteenth has come to mark not only the effective end of chattel slavery, but the reality that freedom and justice have been delayed for far too many. The first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So...
Second.
Alright, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Are there any corrections or revisions to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public here to address the board? Seeing none. We'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Thank you. Good evening. So, first order of business, I would like to request that the board untable the nomination for City Attorney Megan LaChance.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion to untable the nomination for City Attorney, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll move to circulate the ballot box.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion to circulate the ballot box. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Fantastic. So, give me a quick update. So, what we have done, last week, we had the two Housing Resource Days on the 14th and 15th. We estimate about 125 to 145 households showed up to the event. We had 25 vendors with multiple people from each vendor. So those vendors are different services in town. They were everything from food pantries to healthcare providers, employment resource agencies, substance recovery groups, and housing providers, and also a cellphone provider who was giving away cellphones and cellphone plans that were paid for by ARPA dollars that had been made available through federal processes. That cellphone provider gave over 35 cellphones away, which is fantastic. So now 35, you know, more citizens are connected to be able to find those resources that they need. Overall, the event was a success. I want to send out a couple of quick thanks to the Rutland Rec for the loan of their vans and the grill, to the building and zoning team for stepping up to help out with these days, and for Taco Fresco who donated all of the hot dogs, hamburgers, chicken, and buns for food for the two days that the event ran. So that was great. Second item is the First Rutland County Pride Festival was this weekend. I read a proclamation proclaiming June Pride Month in Rutland City. It was a successful event. More than 4,000 people participated in this event. It was a huge economic driver for the city. People came from as far away as Florida, from other parts of Vermont. They stayed overnight. They participated. They ate at our restaurants, and they celebrated on Center Street throughout the city. It was a great event overall, and we're looking forward to it next year. So what we're currently doing, the Transitional Housing Plan submitted on June 1st was reviewed by the state over the past two weeks. I met with the Commissioner of DCF and a couple of other people today. They were looking for something much shorter term. So my plan that I submitted was a midterm plan. It was transitional housing and not temporary shelters. So they were looking more for something that was much more short-term. I emphasize the fact that regardless of what we do in the short-term, we're going to need these transitional housing units in our city, and we push back. I pushed back a little bit, and on Wednesday, we're going to do a follow-up meeting to follow up on that plan and continue moving forward. The state is looking at temporary housing options around the state and what communities can support it. So that's a part of the conversation as to where that would happen. Also, what's going on this week, starting tomorrow when legislature is back in session, they're looking at extending the funding for the hotel program. So make sure if you have a perspective on that, you're reaching out to your legislators and letting them know. That's a hard word for me. I had a chance to meet with Norman Cohen and Al Wakefield to discuss the steps our cities can take to emphasize and support the Declaration of Inclusion that we signed last year. As a follow-up from that meeting, I'll be adding a signed copy of our Declaration of Inclusion to the city's website. Beyond that, I would like to request that the board refer to committee of its choosing the discussion of implementing initiatives to continue our Declaration of Inclusion commitments.
I'll move to refer to General.
Okay, we have a...
Second.
We have a motion to refer that to General. It's been seconded. Any discussion?
Can you be more explicit?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd be happy to. So with the Declaration of Inclusion, there's actually kind of a guidebook of different things that you can do, whether that's putting up a plaque in the city, whether that's creating a public committee to have conversations about how to work on diversity, equity, and inclusion within the city, things like that. So what Rutland City needs to do is determine how we're going to take the statement that we made to be a more inclusive city and emphasize that in our actions, and that's the purpose of this process. Absolutely.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. I wanted to give an update on GovPilot. So as far as digitizing different applications and application processes in the city, today we launched online our liquor and entertainment permits. So now you can apply for your liquor permit online. You can apply for your entertainment permit online. Historically, those have been paper-only documents. Also, throughout the month of May, we have actually put online, wow, subdivision application, signed permits, change of address, development review, and building inspections, as well as a few others. So all of those permits are now online, and people can apply, go right to our website and apply for those different things. We're currently working on completing a special events permit, and that's the permit that you see that comes around here and goes to like four different departments before we get it to the board and have to approve it. This process will actually let all departments review that permit at the same time, and it'll allow the people to apply for that permit and not have to wait. So today, they get the permit from the clerk's office, they wait for the clerk, they go to DPW, they wait for DPW, they go... Now this all happens in real-time, and then they'll get a result back digitally, which is great. We continue to grow our other modules to make our city more accessible to those who do business here. So if you have an idea for a module or something that you think the city could use digitally that we do on paper today, please feel free to let me know. So what we're doing next...
One second, I think Alderman Gillum has a question?
There.
Yeah?
When they file the special events permit, who's it go to first? Where does it actually file?
So I don't...
It hits them all at the same time?
It hits them all at the same time, yeah. I believe. Is that right, Tracy? I think that's where we're at, right?
Yes.
They all go at the same time?
So they all get it the same time? Yes.
Thank you. So what we're doing next, just a few quick updates. Roadwork on Park Street has begun, and while there's paving going on on Park Street and construction on the culvert going on on Allen Street, that particular set of intersections may be a little bit busy. So just be aware that there may be some congestion in that area of the city, especially during business hours, you know, while construction is going on. So Park Street should not take, I think Bob's here somewhere, it shouldn't take too long to get done, right? Just a couple of weeks. So it won't be for too long. The heat pump for this room will be installed on Thursday. So next week, it'll be nice and comfortable here. Agency of Transportation has asked to meet with, the state agency of transportation has asked to meet with the DPW Committee in preparation for next year's Class 1 repaving project on Routes 4 and 7. So I'd like to make a motion to refer that discussion with AOT to the DPW Committee.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion to refer to DPW, to Public Works Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Tonight, we have a few new officers. I'd like to invite Commander Whitehead and the officers up to get introduced to the board and the public.
So we have two, actually three new hires, but two could make it tonight. The first one is Rune Dangle. He is a Level 3, which is full-time certified officer. He just graduated from the police academy and has started field training with us. So he's on his way. The second is Jessica Ebenhausen. She just completed Phase 2 of her training, which is a part-time certified police officer. She has started also field training and will be attending the full-time academy, hopefully in August, and if not in August, then in February. So I'd like to welcome both of them.
Welcome. Thank you.
You'll get your chance over the years, trust me.
While we're welcoming new people, I just wanted to announce that Megan LaChance's nomination passed 10-0.
Great, congratulations. Congratulations.
I suppose I'll take a moment to say a few quick words. Thank you, all of you, for your support. It's deeply appreciated. I'm really looking forward to joining you all and working with you, and it's great to be back and working in Rutland again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Megan, we'll be starting on July 10th. Okay. Last thing, and Commander Whitehead again for this. So if you remember, back in February, I believe it was, or the end of February, early March, we received $56,000 from the hotels to kind of help the city out because we'd been doing a little bit of overtime with the PD, you know, taking care of problems and dealing with situations. If we don't assign those funds, they will essentially go just back to the bottom line at the end of the year. There's an ask to make those assignments. So I'll let you climb up and make that assignment so that it can go.
So the Police Department is asking to assign the funds, the $56,000 received from the hotel owners, to a homeless support fund, which will allow us to train, equipment, and any other items that are associated with the homeless support fund.
Alright, I'd entertain a motion to assign those $56,000 or to suspend the rules. I'd entertain a motion, or do we want to refer this to...
I just have a question.
Yeah.
What, I know we earmarked it to the Police Department.
Yeah, so it wasn't officially earmarked. It was put in the Police Department budget as a, it was put in the Police Department budget as a donation, but if we don't assign those funds, the Police Department will essentially lose them at the end of the year, and they'll be subject to not having access to those in the future.
Okay, so we need to assign it to a specific line item is what they're asking?
Yeah, so the line item we're asking for is a homeless support line item, so...
And if I may, could you explain what that is? What we intend to do with that $56,000?
Yeah, so to reiterate, it's for training for officers, dealing with the homeless population, equipment to be used to help with that, things like, whether it be vehicles or bikes or whatever that happens to be, and then homeless support for things like, you know, for example, you know, getting people food if they need it or things like that, that the Police Department chooses in those times. So think about project vision initiatives and things that we can help with.
So I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
So moved. Second.
Alright, motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I'd entertain a motion to...
Assign the funds to a homeless support fund.
Assign the $56,000 to the homeless support fund.
Second. Second.
Alright, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion?
If I may.
Sure.
Not really a discussion, but I assume that we're using the entities that are already established to do their role first, so to speak, like brought with meals or clothing or things like that. You know, I don't want the city to pick up an initiative that already exists through another entity.
That's right.
Because that's costly to the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
So I don't want to duplicate a service.
That is, the idea of this is to keep this money in PD so that they, for the services that they need to use it for, it's available.
That I don't have a problem with. I just want to make sure we're not reinventing a wheel that already exists.
Appreciate the clarification.
Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Alderman McCann?
Can I ask you two questions of the mayor?
He sat back down, but yeah.
Yeah, sure.
So the first question, actually, we'll just go with one question. In terms of GovPilot, and as you're kind of streamlining some things, if you could keep an eye on, you know, any charter or ordinance language that may need to be cleaned up so that we can make sure we're in line with what's now available digitally, and then if you see anything that's out of line that should be cleaned up, let us know so that we can take that to the committee and get that language cleaned up. I think that would be good, because just stay in line with what we're doing.
That's great. I think we can do that.
Very good.
Anything else?
Alderman McClure?
Thank you. Piggybacking off what Alderman McCann said about GovPilot, I'm just wondering, has there been initiatives to push the awareness of GovPilot into the community a little further than we have in this chamber? There's been quite a few situations in my personal life where people have sent me messages about things, and like, "Oh, this is something you can report in GovPilot." And the response is, "What's GovPilot?" Is there any sort of initiative we have planned, maybe a rollout with the radio, something with the local news to really broaden the awareness in the community?
Not at the moment, but talking about it here probably helps, and then certainly can take a look at how we can make that more of a highlighted item as we go forward.
Thank you.
Alderman McCann, I believe, has a question.
I remembered my second question. Sorry. So in terms of the construction at Park and Allen, I think you said, has that had any impact on the bus routes, and if so, has that been communicated to people that might be using it?
I'm looking at Bob. I don't think it has.
If it has, I don't think so.
Oh, okay. Bill?
We have rerouted some.
Okay.
To eliminate...
Is that around Allen Street, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. Can they still get to their stops, though?
Yeah.
I think they can, but there is some communication. If they're not, they know how to reroute.
Perfect.
There is communication, Bill.
Great, thank you.
I saw a memo go by from the bus group which I'm on, and they're saying, keeping a bike and then working with the department.
Perfect, thank you.
They are aware that there's going to be some, especially on the north side, where you've got Pine Street and Baxa Street and Robin Street all ripped up at the same time, which I'm not having a problem with that, but some people are having a problem with that. I just said, be patient, it's going to get done, it's going to look beautiful once it's done. Just have to reroute where you're going, that's all.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, anything further? I think we're good.
Okay.
Moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none. Reports and letters from department heads and officials. We'll start with Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a request that the board adopt the Downtown Capital Plan and Budget in order to renew our designated downtown. There's a memo, a copy of the draft plan, and comments from downtown merchants and property owners on pages 1 to 3 of your packet.
Thank you. So in light of the public hearing that was held prior to this meeting, the request is to adopt the plan as drafted or with any additions or deletions resulting from the public comment that was received. And then I just want to let you know that the application is due July 3rd, and then I'm, I'm sorry, and the announcement, I'm sorry, I wrote this and can't read it. On July 24th, we'll be presenting live to the board that will make the determination as to whether or not we will receive the renewal.
So I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And Barbara, the resolution is, do we have a...
Just a motion to adopt the downtown designated...
Capital plan and the budget. So moved.
As presented.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the Downtown Capital Plan and Budget as presented, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McClure?
Thank you. Barbara, I just want to confirm, that public comment aspect that would be then edited into the plan, when it is presented, that will include what was stated here tonight by us on the board as well as the community members?
No, what will happen is the comments that were taken during the public hearing will be included in the application to the board, and it sounded like that you were, the board, the motion was to approve as presented, which means none of those comments would be added to the draft.
Okay.
Any additional discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, next, we have Barbara again with a request that the board adopt a residential anti-displacement and relocation plan. There's a memo on page 4 of your packet.
So during the Community Development Board meeting regarding the city's Vermont VCDP application for hospital heights, the city was asked if it had any objections to the potential list of award conditions. The award conditions are typically boilerplate. However, it was noticed that one of the conditions requires the city to adopt a residential anti-displacement and relocation plan. Without the plan, the city may not receive a VCDP award. Any municipality receiving VCDP funds must adopt this plan, and the plan provides relocation assistance to displaced homes for projects funded by VCDP. The cost, which would be included in the project budget. This is not new, and the sub-grantee who has benefited from the city's VCDP grant award has always been required to abide by the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act when a property is being rehabilitated and is not vacant. The seven certifications that are required in writing are addressed in the application phase of a VCDP grant. This plan does not at this time require private developers who are not using federal funds to submit residential anti-displacement and relocation plans. This is relevant only to the municipality when using federal funding to minimize the displacement of persons from their homes.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve the residential anti-displacement and relocation plan.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to adopt the residential anti-displacement and relocation plan, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the resolution should be, yeah.
And I'll move to circulate the resolution for signatures.
Second.
We have a motion to circulate the resolution for signatures, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, the city clerk will circulate that. Barbara's up once again with an RRA recommendation to award a business incentive and assistance program loan to Loose Luna Tea House and Gifts. There's a memo and a copy of the application on pages 5 to 11 of your packet.
Thank you. You would think this would get easier. The applicant is Michelle Caderro, and she is interested in opening a gift shop and tea house restaurant called Loose Luna at 11 Center Street, formerly the Wonderfeet Museum. She is requesting a $10,000 forgivable loan and referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for a secured loan of up to $50,000. The application meets the criteria through personal investment of $30,000 and the creation of two jobs. Michelle is working with Nancy Shuttleworth at SBA, and the business plan was, I offered it to you if you were interested in seeing it, and the city has issued a license for the establishment. And Michelle and her husband are here, and they can answer any questions that you might have particular to her application.
Hi, I'm Michelle Caderro. Thank you for allowing me to, and my husband, Don Abrahamson, thank you for letting us come here and present our application to you. Basically, it's what Barbara was saying, we're going to be opening up a tea house and a gift shop at 11 Center Street, and the tea house will, you'll be able to get premium tea, a pot of tea, and light fare there. We're not going to do a full-service restaurant, really just kind of a nosh. The gift shop will be in the back of the space, and we'll try to offer, you know, artisan-type gifts, hopefully local artisans, so, and, you know, I think it's something that is missing right now here in Rutland. And the combination of the two, the gift shop and the tea shop, it's really because they have kind of a cross-market, right? And so, you know, we'll have people coming into the gift shop that might stay for tea, coming in for tea that'll go into the gift shop, similar to what used to happen with Annie's Bookstop and the ice cream shop, right? You'd go for ice cream, you'd get, you know, books. So that's really kind of why we decided to combine the two. But it really offers a place for the community to just, you know, be able to, a place to come and sit and relax, I guess.
Have a cup of tea.
Exactly. Do you have any questions?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of a $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan and referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for a secured buy-up loan for up to $50,000 to Tony Towney Enterprises LLC, doing business to as Loose Luna.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion. It's been seconded. I believe Alderman Gillum, you had a...
I had a question. Hours of operation?
So the hours of operation will be Tuesday through, definitely through Saturday, possibly Sunday, probably 10 to 6, maybe later on some other days, but it'll primarily be, you know, during the day.
Let me give you a scenario of last night when we left Castleton's major event. Nobody was open at 7 o'clock at night. We couldn't find ice cream, we couldn't find a place to eat, we couldn't find anything because everybody had closed down. So I'm saying, you're one of the downtown people now, that I think we need to refocus on hours because the public is now starting to move around and things are happening. I was really surprised on a Sunday night that everything was locked up. And I think maybe you might want to think about that.
Okay.
Some nights run a little later than others.
That sounds like... Oh, sure.
We plan to adjust hours as fitting to the population. As the city grows and we get more people downtown living upstairs, to keep it vibrant, you have to have shops open. We'll stay open until 10:00 PM, you know, so long as we're not creating a problem. So it's really kind of in flux right now. We have hours from 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning, planning to go to 7:00 PM, and that's basically, you know, as the need is met, if we can afford to stay open and people want the service, we'll be there.
Especially with Paramah working right across the street from me.
Well, that's, yeah, and we'd like to partner with some of the other businesses in the area.
I think you got it. I think you're all set. You're on your way.
Alderman McClure?
I just had a question about specifically wages for employees here. I see that you earmarked, oh, I just saw, I see that. I saw that you had earmarked about $15 to $20 wages-wise. Is there any expectation of that being on the higher end of the wages for the downtown employees just due to the cost of living crisis that we all find ourselves in?
If I could just ask that you step to the podium, so I can speak to you.
So are you asking, are you asking whether in that range we'll be paying a higher range?
Paying on that higher range than that 15. Paying on that higher range than that $15.
I think, you know, I think that we start out with conservative business plan, and, you know, the hope is to be able to provide people with a living wage. So I think, you know, I can't make any promises exactly what we'll be offering, but definitely in that range.
I'll add a little bit more.
Okay.
We've already discussed the fact that we would like to open a business where if we had five or six employees, we can offer health benefits, a 401K, maybe profit sharing or something like that. Honestly, at this point in time, I don't think either one of us knows how to get there to that point, so it's going to be a learning process. And if there's anybody here who's willing to lend a hand and teach us how to do it...it's been 40 years since I've owned a business. It's been 10 for you, 15? Yeah? So we would love to be able to do that, have someplace where somebody can come to work, look forward to it, make a livable wage, and be able to support themselves. The only way we're going to do that is with the city's support. So I'm counting on you guys, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. As a young person who lives and resides and works in downtown Rutland, it makes me very happy to hear that a business owner is looking for...looking to give their employees a nice head start.
We're here for the long haul. I'd like to see downtown going.
I would just add that the wages in the application and the number of hours are what is the criteria in the buy-up policy. The buy-up policy is, I believe, somewhere in a committee. So if there is some suggestion in the committee to maybe raise those amounts, that would be the place and time to kind of discuss that and maybe have that conversation.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the buy-up forgivable loan and for a referral to Heritage for a additional loan of up to $50,000. Any additional discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, we have Superintendent Peters and Maintenance and Facilities Director Dolan with information about downtown streetscape beautification work they'll be doing. Information is on pages 12 to 17 of your packet.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Tiffany and Brian up as well. So in the last total six months, year, we've started this conversation of how the maintenance department can continue to assist with downtown streets beautification. With that being said, with the mayor's support, we started to really look at this and how we could do it, but also then not have the financial burden. So the proposal or information that we plan to move forward with is what I had outlined in the packet. I'm not going to read it word for word, but the general idea is that we would begin...maintenance department would begin July 1st through the three phases. With that being said, Tyler felt it was very important to include DPW because, again, collaboration of departments, and if we're doing some cleaning, how can DPW...how can DPW assist us? That meeting went very well, and so this is where we are now, to give you that update. And we're really excited about the collaboration. The maintenance department already does some of the work, and now we're going to extend that. The timeline that I look at, we're looking at like a six-month, that's going to support the...help with the $11,000, is we would start July 1st, maybe a little bit earlier, if this is no questions or no objections, go through October, and then finish the fiscal year May-June, because our fiscal years run the same. And that would get us to a really good point, and then come back with another proposal, possibly for next fiscal year.
Any questions from members of the board? Alderwoman McClure and Alderman McCann.
Thank you, Kim. My question for you, I see, once again, the vacant tree wells comes up here, and I see mention about cleaning them up and weed whacking around them and stuff like that, and it's great. So my question is, it loops back into what I had mentioned at the public hearing earlier today. If there are plans to fill these vacant tree wells with concrete, has any consideration come forth from the rec. department or from DRP about utilizing those vacant tree wells in the time being before the Center Street redesign to fill them with concrete and place bike racks in them to increase the amount of bicycle parking on Center Street? As we all know, it's summertime, more bikes are coming out, and especially with the addition of Down Valley Bikes into our downtown, I just feel like that would be very valuable.
That's exactly why Tyler had the meeting with DPW, so he can fill you in on what that plan looks like.
Sure. Yeah, as Kim stated, had a great meeting with Bob and a lot of folks from his crew. You know, working with DPW, they have a lot of stuff going on that we don't know about either. They have a big thing going on with tree plantings in downtown that I was unaware of. I just wanted to reach out to these folks to say like, you know, where are you guys at? This is kind of what we're thinking. We've talked to Brian and Tiffany. We're just trying to get a plan together. So I'm not doing something that's going to adversely affect what these guys have got going on, because that's very important, to make sure that everybody's working as a team and collaborating. So, you know, we're not going backwards. We don't have to do stuff twice. In talking with Dan McIntyre, who's...what's Dan's actual title? He's maintenance operator.
The Streets Department Manager.
The manager of the Streets Department. You know, we're going to...basically what we're going to do is we're going to go down, we're going to clean up what's there. There's a lot of just weeds and grass and stuff like that. And as Dan and their crews are able to, they're going to start filling those in based off of the plan that they have in effect, working with Ted and their tree plan that they have that's going forward. So bike racks, I'll put them in. You buy them, I'll put them in for you, yeah. Not a problem. Is that money in our budget? I don't know, but maybe it's in theirs, but, you know, we're more than willing to do whatever. I mean, that's what this is all about, is it's, you know...and when we had this great meeting with DPW, everybody's in support of it. It's in the partnership. It's like, it's for the benefit of the downtown area and what we can all do together to make the city the best that we can make it. And, you know, more than happy to do whatever. And so if people come to me and say, "Hey, Tyler, you know, what about this?" or "What about that?", you know, obviously, I'll take it. I'll talk to Bob and his folks to see what they think, and if that's something that we can do, definitely, let's do it. I mean, that's why we work for the city, and that's the best stuff for it.
And I'll just second that really collaborative effort. I think we are in a really great place where we can work together when we receive messages like that. I mean, like Tyler said, I mean, receiving that feedback, kind of hearing what the community wants, I mean, those are all things that we can take into consideration. We know that a welcoming city is a pedestrian-friendly city, bike-friendly city, and this collaboration is really a central piece of that to make that a reality. So, thank you.
Alderman McCann?
Just piggybacking on that, some thoughts with bike racks is if we have the opportunity to install them when they're getting poured, that's generally more secure because you don't have to worry about retrofitting bolts into existing concrete. On the other hand, if you wanted to reuse those racks as we tear up Center Street, maybe going in after the fact and bolting them in, so then you can grind the bolts out and move the rack later, something to consider. And then in terms of design and placement and spacing, there is an association of pedestrian bicycle professionals that has an essentials of bike parking guide out there, and it's got measurements and best practices and things to avoid, and I'm happy to send that your way so that you can kind of keep that in mind as you consider maybe doing this. And then the simple bike racks, I mean, for, you know, $100 or $200, you can generally get a staple-type rack or the ones that kind of look like an upside-down U. And we might be able to even get, you know, businesses or, you know, cyclists in the community to pony up some money. If we have the ability to put them in between the two departments and all we need is to buy a rack, we might be able to get some people to buy them for us, that we can just put them in.
Anything additional? Great. I believe you also have some updates on spring and summer programs.
Okay, so I just felt, since I was going to be here, I'll do a couple updates. Today, we opened summer camps. So we are serving to just today about just a little over 300 kids, between swim teams starting, basketball camp starting, and then just our overall summer camps that have started today. But then, looking at when I was doing my rounds and going to the pool, going to the rec. center, going to Giorgietti, I would estimate we were probably served over 600 community members today at all of our facilities. And that's really important, what is happening. We're seeing this influx of participation, not just from city residents, from outside city residents, because we do have the assets. With that being said, that means that we also had about 60 to 75 high school, college kids working today, back on the books and doing summer camp. It was a great day, it was great weather, we're going to have a really good week, we're really excited. These last two weekends, we also supported the Special Olympics basketball tournament at the rec. center. That was, again, a very special event for us. That was a partnership that we started a year ago. They utilize our facilities on Wednesday nights and now have now incorporated the tournaments into their schedule. So we're extremely happy to have them at the rec. center these past two weekends. I also just finished some lifeguard training, certified a little over 75 kids and adults. Part of that is part of the YES Plan that Rutland High School does, the year-end studies. I was able to get on the books with them about eight years ago when I moved here. Not having lifeguards was a huge miss, and so with my background, I've been offering that. So it does take up quite a bit of my time, but these are kids that do end up working for us. Now that I'm one of the only lifeguard trainers in the area, I offer an additional class for Pittsford. I had Killington kids, I had Manchester kids, I had Middlebury kids. And so it was...it's...I do love teaching, and it is financial revenue that's coming into the city for teaching that. One Dimension Goddick Adult Center, they recently went on a trip to Maine for two days. That's April and Emily went with them, and they...I just did a quick highlight of what kind of things they're offering in the summer. I went by tonight on the way here, and the entire parking lot was full, so I have no clue what's going on tonight, but it's just...there's always something going at the Goddick Adult Center. We just finished up our mountain bike program, serving over 80 youth. If you remember, too, we received a nice scholarship from Alderman Toyota, and we were able to give kids youth bikes that could not afford them so they could participate in the program. Wanted to give a quick last, now that the VAC pilot program has ended. Again, that was something that I came to the board with. We started with the first session of six weeks. We served over 200 kids. It was so popular, I was able to squeeze in another one for the spring, and you can see where the total revenue came in. We were also able to offer drop-in swimming on the weekends when it was cold out. And I just want to give a huge thanks to the VAC for their partnership. They were very accommodating. But also, the Rutland Free Library bought all the kids' books, and they were really nice books, and they were level-appropriate. So they provided four books, they provided over 200 books to the swim lessons. I will probably be coming in the next three months to start talking about the VAC and what that looks like and what they're asking and how, if we want to continue that partnership. Adult softball, 28-plus teams, again, that does bring in revenue. Expenses are also there as well. We did raise prices this year to help offset our costs that continually go up. That includes also our umpires. They do have a set price that they ask for, and we can't have games without umpires, so we typically are able to do that. And then just going back to the summer camp, it's just amazing what we...what's going on. Watching our head counselors, high school, college kids that have been with us for four to five years now take that next leadership role, I really did not have spent any time at camp today. I walk in, check in, and leave. They're just doing a great job, and I want to thank them for all their hard work and giving up their summer to be leaders in the community. And then lastly, summer concerts begin this Wednesday. It's like, it's here. We will continue those at Main Street Park. Typically, what we did last year, we set up a tent, then we take it down, and we will continue with that. And I'm hoping by the next Board of Aldermen meeting, I will have an update on Main Street Park and where the timeline is on that.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Peters? Alderman McCann?
Thanks. So the trip to Maine from the Goddick Center, I assume that was on a bus or a shuttle of some sort?
Yep.
That's awesome. I, you know, folks in my family who've lost their ability to drive and being able to provide that sort of outing is great. I'm wondering, how do we get people from Agunklit to come here for a show also?
I know, yeah, I can ask April that, so...
Okay.
Because I think they just form that partnership as well. They go on like four trips throughout the year.
Thanks. Yeah, I think that'd be a great opportunity.
That's a good idea. It's a great idea. Yeah.
Not that I'm putting that on you.
No, but that's still...April can do that.
Any additional questions?
It's been on April.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request from Chief Kilkullen to approve the disposal of a 2011 Ford Crown Victoria that will not pass inspection. There's a memo on page 18 of your packet. And Chief is away on vacation, so if you wanted to speak to it, you could. Welcome.
So, yeah, the police department is requesting to donate our last and final Crown Vic, the 2011, to the Vermont Police Academy for training purposes. As you stated, their cruiser won't pass inspection, the cost of repair is greater than the value of the vehicle. Just as a informational piece, the K-9 Association assisted us with raising funds for our current K-9 vehicle in the amount of $7,400, which covered the new K-9 cage insert, the heat alarm, and the door popper. So we're requesting that we donate the car to the academy, and eventually it'll be used for the K-9 program.
Great. Alderwoman Davis?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second. So we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I am moved...I move to approve the donation of the car to the K-9 program at the Vermont Police Academy, the 2011 Ford Crown Victoria.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Commissioner Protavansky with a request to authorize amendment to the box culvert replacement and bridge rehabilitation contract. There's a memo and a copy of the amendment on pages 19 to 24 of your packet.
Yeah, this request is authorization for the mayor to sign a contract amendment with Dubois-King for basically onsite construction engineering for the Grove Street Culvert Project, not to exceed $59,9658.
I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll move.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment in the amount of not to exceed $59,658 with Dubois and King to perform construction-based engineering services for the Grove Street Culvert Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McCann?
Thanks. I haven't had a chance to dig in this. Could you just give me the elevator pitch of what's changing that we would be approving here?
It's a common practice to put this out to bid, award it to a contractor. Or no, it was designed by the engineer, awarded to a contractor to perform, and then once they decide on the scope of the project, they can give you a price to oversee it, basically.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Any additional comments or discussion? Alderman Gillum?
And this project starts when?
Early August.
Early August, okay. Just so people know, we have another project working on here.
Thereabouts.
All right, seeing nothing further. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. We have you again with a request to approve the disposal of an inoperable scissor lift. There's a memo on page 25 of your packet.
So, yeah, this scissor lift we purchased through a private sale, I don't know, 11, 12 years ago for $1,500. We recently sent it up to get repaired. They put a price...the company doesn't exist anymore, so they can't get parts, but if they could, they estimated it'd be about $8,000 to repair. So it has some serious safety issues with it. Brakes don't work, steering doesn't work well, so I want to make sure it gets scrapped and it doesn't end up getting traded or sold or whatever, so nobody uses it. It gets hurt.
Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll move. Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to allow...oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Alderwoman Savage, go ahead.
To allow the DPW commissioner to scrap the scissor lift as requested.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the disposal, and it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Alderman McCann and then Alderman Barbie Gallo.
I see in here a comment about a new lift being about $14,000. Do we have a plan for maybe moving that way?
That was my plan to maybe go to board finance.
Okay, okay, so we're not approving that here.
I've gotten two prices. I mean, there's some used ones we could go after, too, but...
And do you have a last...
Right.
Give me an estimate what the scrap for the existing one might get us?
I have no idea. Couple hundred dollars, probably.
Gotcha.
I was really surprised, actually, at the price of a new one. I was expecting a lot more than that.
Oh, nice.
Alderman Barbie Gallo?
Don just asked my question.
Very good. Seeing nothing further, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is a copy of the Treasurers Report for the period ending May 31st. This was emailed to board members on June 16th, and I would entertain a motion to receive and file.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion to receive and file, it's been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a request from Attorney Blumer for final authorization of the 1% local option tax, which was approved by the voters, the legislature and the governor. There's a memo on pages 26 to 29 of your packet.
Yep, so it's a short memo. It's basically the way that the charter provision is worded is that it requires the Board to actually authorize the assessment of the, the tax, it's not automatic. So the state has granted us the ability to assess the tax. I assume that you all would like to do that and so you just need the motion that I provided in order to do that. And the Department of Taxes is going to be administering or collecting as part of their regular sales tax and they've already put out a notice to various businesses to start doing so on July 1st. So I don't, they kind of jumped the gun slightly, but as long as we're fine with doing that, it should all, I have an effective date in here of July 1st, so.
All right, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Second.
We have one, it's been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderwoman Savage?
Did they discuss the plan going forward to discern like the difference between the 05701 taxes and how they're going to be?
Treasurer Markowski has, has kind of been the one that's been the point person. I did see in one of the notices that they sent, that they're encouraging businesses to try to figure that out. I don't, the mayor, I don't know if you, if you, question was, did they address the ZIP code issue at all in their correspondence to the, to the businesses?
So, one second, Mayor.
We need a motion on the floor.
Before we ask questions like this, we're supposed to have a motion on the floor, so if someone would like to read the motion?
Motion to authorize the assessment of a local option sales tax of 1% beginning on July 1st, 2023 pursuant to the powers granted by Section 8.9b of the city's charter.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Mayor Dungus?
So, the conversation at the State House while this was going through committee up there, and Alderman Coopley was there with us, so, is that the state asks us very kindly and our neighbors that are in the same ZIP code to be patient as we work through the process of properly allocating the funds that belong to Rutland City.
Not patient, I worry about.
So, so the idea basically being, you've got your primary 05701 ZIP code and then you have your dash and your dash four and that's how you can figure something out. You can figure it out based on street, you can figure it out based on mailbox. Each business is going to be a little bit different. The brick and mortar stores, it's pretty simple, but it's the online businesses, it's something as simple as Green Mountain Power, all those different pieces might have a little bit of complexity to it. There is a way to do it without changing the ZIP code. It would be easier if we could just do the ZIP code, but since that's not an option, at least for the foreseeable future, the, the idea basically being that we just have to be patient, we can continue to communicate with the state, Mary's prepared to do that and as we talk to the state and say, hey, we, we're looking at these records and we see that this person is, that cash is being sent here, we can go for those allocations. And we expect that Rutland Town will have to go through the same thing because as we know from previous conversations, some of that money in the city has been charged and sent to Rutland Town. So we'll be prepared to work through that process.
And mend.
And mend, yeah.
Very good. Any additional questions, discussion? Alderwoman Davis?
So, just, just a process question, I guess, because, do we have to do anything to the charter and/or ordinance to reflect the separation of the 1% to take out the entertainment piece?
I believe that's the, I don't know if Treasurer Markowski gave a memo or if she just asked for that to be referred to committee, but yes, there's, it's not automatic. I have not been looped in necessarily the overlap, so I can't really speak to the issue, but she, she thinks that there is some, going to be some kind of overlap and would like to have the Board address, address the overlap.
So that's the next item on our agenda and we'll refer to committee and discuss there when she's with us.
Chairman, I think we were just trying to, to see whether it was needed and necessary if changes were just, if the Board approves a 1% and we start collecting it, whether or not that adjustment can just occur, the separation or whether we needed to redo an ordinance to cover the 1%.
Yeah, it would be an ordinance change to, I think, if it's wholesale, just taking out the entertainment piece.
Okay.
It's an ordinance change and it's going to have a 30-day, it won't go into effect for 30 days, so there will be.
Correct.
A little bit of overlap. This is, I think, one of the reasons why if Mary had had her, her choice, she might have pushed it off a little bit farther than July 1 because I'm not sure we had every duck in a row, but it shouldn't affect a small, small amount of folks and I think it'll get straightened out fairly quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion or questions? All right, we have a motion and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, following that, we have the request from Treasurer Markowski that the Board review city rooms, meals and entertainment tax ordinance and possible changes to the entertainment tax.
I'll move to refer to charter and ordinance.
Very good.
Second.
So we have a motion to refer and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to reports of standing committees, we have none. Reports of representatives, we have none. Reports of select committees, we have none. Fetitions, letters and miscellaneous communications, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda and that brings us to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Alderman McCann?
Thank you. So at our last meeting, there were two things that came up and I'm hoping we might be able to have a little bit of discussion about it today. The first was the mayor discussed the development of the sort of city strategic plan, sort of being likely to move forward. And second, there was a comment in the discussion at some point that Rutland is not a destination town and that got me thinking, I'm really curious to know what the Board members here think Rutland is currently and what they think we should be in the future. And then in what way does the mayor plan to consider these sorts of viewpoints when he's developing this plan? So if we can start with a discussion, you know, just sort of what some people think about what we are, what we should be, and then maybe hear from the mayor about incorporating viewpoints.
So, I'm happy to have the mayor answer any questions, but I think if we want to have that kind of discussion, that's something we should refer to committee.
Okay.
So then, yeah, I guess hear from the mayor first about how he would incorporate that, if at all, and then see if there's something that would then get referred to committee.
Yeah, so first off, the strategic plan should, when we say, you know, it's my plan, the plan, the idea being is it's something that I'm leading the charge on, but it's not my ideas and my concepts, it's the community's ideas and the community's concepts. I do want to be clear because there's been confusion in the past, even because I was a little bit, you know, off base in the terminology that I used. That strategic plan is not the same thing as the city master plan, right? The strategic plan is the 25-year plan, the city master plan is a plan that we do every eight years. And I just, I was, I was conflating the two terms, so to speak, it's actually a community master plan, but, but that strategic plan is, is almost a vision document. It tells us what the city will look like 25 years from now, what our citizens expect to see from an architecture standpoint, what we expect to see the roads look like and how transportation's all going to play in to those pieces. That will be a process that we will work with a consultant on. We will be looking for feedback like we would almost on any zoning piece. So it's not a closed process by any means, it is a very open and communicative process and will take some, some time, but I do think that starting that conversation in committee to get a baseline would be a fantastic idea, so.
Okay. So if you think it would be helpful, then I would make a motion to refer that discussion to maybe the general committee and, yeah, have that discussion about what the Board thinks that future could look like so that our contractors can take that into consideration when they start the project.
So, just a point of clarification, if this is a discussion of Rutland as a destination city or not, maybe that would be better suited for community and economic development?
Okay.
Seems more in line with the charge of that committee.
Okay, yeah, I can change to that. Thank you.
So we have a motion to refer to CED and it's been seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And any additional unfinished business?
Actually, I want to make a comment.
Alderman Gillen?
If I could, if I'm allowed to. A lot of, a lot of taxpayers don't understand that we are a destination area. When we were, the Rotary Club was out there cleaning the bike path a couple of weeks ago and we were in the parking lot of Giorgiety. The parking lot was packed with bikers. We are a destination for biking right now, so things are happening. I'm not saying we're not doing anything, but things are happening, not as fast maybe[1674.16]